Why buy your next vehicle from Community Motors of Mason City?
Great service from three locations: Community on Monroe, Community Motors Westside, and Mason City Ford. Ten new franchises and hundreds of vehicles to give you more choices. Plus, Community offers an exclusive 3-3 warranty on pre-owned vehicles and 10-year 250,000-mile warranty on new. Need more reasons why? Stop or visit communityautogroup.com.
Because nobody beats a community deal, nobody.
It's seven o'clock. Just a few quick announcements here before we call the roll. The packages we have up here on the table are available at www.masoncity.net. Scroll over to your government, scroll down to mayor council, and you can find on the tab there ranked by date, packet, and agenda. So you can see everything that we are doing here at home. One quick note: Blue Zones. We were--Mason City was selected to move into the next round. We went from 8:59 cities down to 11, and we're number two. We're the second ranked city now in enthusiasm and support, pledge support for this project. If you haven't signed up for this, we should really get folks to do it. Please go to www.bluezonsproject.com, and pledge your support there and continue to learn about the project. Or you can text BZP to 772937. That's BZP to 772937. And as I've said many times, if you don't know how to do it, get your kids around. They'll be able to do it, and it'll be a nice little family event for you. And we'll do our best here to become Blue Zones. So we'll call the meeting to order. This is the February 21st, 2012, regular meeting of the Mason City City Council. I observe that all council members are present, and we'll let the record reflect that as such. Is there a motion and a second to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. I'll pay per say aye.
Aye.
I'll vote the same side. Motion carries. All right, we've got a few special items of business we're going to do tonight. First is proclamation of Black History Month, and we'll follow it up here with a presentation by North Iowa Diversity Appreciation Team. So the proclamation reads as follows: "Whereas throughout history, African-Americans have made invaluable contributions to the economic prosperity, spiritual character, and cultural development of our city, state, and nation. And whereas the Iowa Department of Cultural Affairs is served by Mason City as a cultural entertainment district as part of the statewide initiative to boost economic development through arts, history, and culture, thereby allowing the community to effectively and aggressively market its cultural opportunities and work to create synergies and cooperation among different groups or businesses for promotional events. And whereas Black History Month was formally adopted in 1976, it's a time to inform and educate our community about the history of African-American men and women and affirm the importance of their contributions to building this country in all facets of our civilization. We honor today the struggle of African-Americans in taking a stance against prejudice and advancing the cause of civil rights and strengthening families and communities. And whereas this month is a time for all Americans to reflect on the rich history and teaching of African-Americans whose contributions are vast and wide. Now therefore, I, er, Mayor Mason City, do hereby proclaim the month of February as Black History Month and encourage all our citizens to recognize this opportunity to honor and celebrate the contributions of Black Americans in all facets of endeavor in our community, state, and nation." And we have Mr. Merb Rockus here from North Iowa Area Appreciation Team. And when we accept the proclamation, we'll do a presentation. Come on up here, and we'll give him a round of applause.
For the new council members that aren't familiar with the North Iowa Diversity Appreciation Team, it was founded in 1994. That's eighteen years now promoting diversity in North Iowa. In 2011, we started our year with the Art in Writing Contest, and it's a contest that we have every year. It was sponsored by the Mason City High School and the postmaster, Scott Pardo. We had 203 entries. 156 of these were in art, 47 were in writing. The first and second place winners of these get a cash award and a, how to say, like a plaque with their art on it, and then a book of posting stamps with their art on it. In August, we participated with the Night Out Against Crime, and we had a table set up there. We walked around, promoted diversity, and promoted our ethnic dinner that we had planned. In September, we had our eight annual ethnic lunch at Central Park. We were the first big event for the celebrating of the New Streetscape. We had nine vendors participate. We had food from Mexican, Greek, German, Tasmanian, Ukrainian, Mongolian, Filipino, Hawaiian, Laotian, Vietnamese, Cambodian, Thai, Polish foods. We also had a small display of jewelry that was being made, and also a small display of Indian art. 2012, we continue with these events. We'd also like to expand. We're looking for funding through grants to expand into something different and new, and we're always looking for new members on our council. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, number two. It's proclamation of Earth Hour, and then we'll have a presentation by the Prime Minister of the Advisory Commission. And the proclamation reads as follows: "Whereas the people of Mason City are concerned about climate change, and we believe the energy efficiency, natural resource conservation, and sustainability efforts are imperative to the well-being of our planet and its inhabitants and the continued viability of our community, this hour has been designated as Earth Hour to remind everyone that by working together, a city can make a positive impact in the fight against climate change. Whereas organized by the World Wildlife Fund, Earth Hour is a symbolic international event amongst businesses, individuals, and governments. Our urge should take action to reduce their carbon emissions and their impact on the planet. And whereas Earth Hour asks all citizens, businesses, government agencies, and commercial and non-commercial establishments to turn off all nonessential lighting during the hour, and encourages everyone to pledge to do more in the coming year to reduce their carbon footprint. And whereas during Earth Hour, we will turn off the lights of buildings and homes throughout Mason City, setting forth a bold vision for our city to work towards a solution to the escalating climate crisis, protect our future and that of future generations. Now therefore, I, er, Mayor Mason City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Saturday, March 31st, 2012, between 8:30 and 9:30, as Earth Hour in Mason City, and do urge all citizens to turn off nonessential lighting during this time." And we have Mary Schultz here from the Prime Minister of the Advisory Commission. Give her a round of applause.
Do the lights dim at all?
No.
You just gave my presentation. I'm going to start with a brief history of Earth Hour because I went around this last couple weeks asking people if they knew about Earth Hour, and not many did. So we'll kind of go from here. Okay? Maybe we won't. Right click, left click, nothing's happening. Okay, what is Earth Hour? As Eric said, Earth Hour is a global event. It was organized by the Worldwide Fund for Nature. People, businesses, and governments come to support. The largest environmental event in history, and it's scheduled the last Saturday of every March because it coincides with the equinox as Earth Hour revolves around the globe. We had a video. We're going to pass on the video. But Earth Hour started in 2006 in Australia. Sydney's fighters wanted to show that their support for climate action was needed, and everyone, from children to CEOs, politicians, everyone has the power to change the world in which we all live. On the second anniversary in Sydney, over 2.2 million people and 2,000 businesses turned out their lights for one hour to show support. By 2008, Australia was just going to take the plan to the rest of Australia, but other nations and countries decided that they wanted to pick up the cry also, and it was over 400 cities and towns in 35 countries in less than a year. Earth Hour said something compelling to the world. It said that climate changes, climate challenges facing our planet are so significant that change cannot just be local, it needs to be global. By 2009, hundreds of millions of people in 88 countries switched off their lights for that one hour, and it grew from 400 cities to 4,000 cities. In 2010, Earth Hour became a global call to stand up, take responsibility, and lead the way. By now, there were 128 countries, and iconic buildings and landmarks from the Pacific to Europe to Africa to the Americas all turned off their lights. In 2011, starting with one city in one country, within five years, Earth Hour spanned the globe, was embraced by over 5,200 cities and 135 countries. And their mission changed from just turning off their lights to one hour to go beyond that one hour and think about what people could do to make a difference. 2012 is fast approaching. The date is Saturday, March 31st. What can your city do to make a difference? And Eric talked about some of those when he was talking about the proclamation. What can you do to make a difference? Get involved. Why? Because put simply, our future depends on it. Earth Hour has raised awareness of sustainability issues. It's about giving people a voice, working together to create a better future. Your involvement matters. Earth Hour has been the inspiration for millions of people taking those steps. Think about how you can save in your own homes. How can you save energy for one hour? Then go beyond that hour to life, lasting behavior changes. You can communicate Earth Hour to all your friends, your family, everyone that you come into communication with. Empower your community. Show others that you can make a difference. Encourage people to think about Earth Hour and talk about Earth Hour. You can switch off. Take that first step. Join millions of other people. Switch off your lights and nonessential lights. Don't want to turn off something you're going to trip and fall. But Saturday, March 31st, 2012, for one hour, 8:30 to 9:30. Lights out around the world. This isn't just something that's local. It is global. In Rome, the Colosseum, the Eiffel Tower, the Great Wall of China, and you can actually see these cities going dark from satellite as they turn off their lights. If you go on YouTube and watch them, it is awesome to see. Singapore, Sydney, Dubai, Rio de Janeiro, and I couldn't put all the countries up there. Las Vegas, the Las Vegas Strip went dark. Can you imagine how much money that had to cost them, yet how much energy they saved and how much money they saved? New York, Times Square, the Empire State Building, and the list just goes on and on. San Francisco, Golden Gate Bridge, Chicago, Boston, Minneapolis. A little bit closer to home in Iowa. Had to pick ISU. I'm an ISU grad. All the resident halls turned off their nonessential lights. Des Moines, the State Capitol Building. Aviva, the sixth largest insurance group in the world, turned off their lights. Cedar Rapids, and then coming closer to home last year in Mason City, City Hall and Music Man Square. Mason City Earth Hour 2012 is fast approaching, and the Environmental Stewardship Advisory Commission is creating awareness of Earth Hour through media posters, the proclamation, presentations, communication, and culminating in a celebration at Music Man Square. Free pop and pop garden. Support Earth Hour because one person alone, joined by thousands and then millions and millions, can make a difference. You can be that person. For more information, you can go to earthhour.org, contact myself, or Stacy Lancaster. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
One more quick thing here. I have posters that we designed, and I'm going to pass them out. And I'll leave some up front if anybody wants to take any and split it.
All right, thank you very much. That was a very nice presentation. All right, third up tonight, we have the Director of Main Street Mason City, Mr. Marty Walsh, who will be giving us his quarterly report for Main Street Mason City. Mr. Walsh?
Thanks, Mayor Council. Thanks very much. This one is our quarterly report for November, December, and January, to try to go over a few quick events. We did our home for the holidays this fall business Saturday, which included ping pong ball drop. This was the first time we'd done this event. It was an event that what in Main Street we'd call R&amp;D ripoff and duplication, so that Ames has been doing for a long time. We take from that to one of the benefits of Main Street. We didn't have to come up with all this on our own. Definitely had two kings, but it was a very well-attended event. We had over 40 businesses participate. They put coupons on ping pong balls and threw them off a roof, and it's definitely something that we want to do again next year. In that holiday season, from the businesses that we talked to, all reported very, very solid sales. The vast majority of people have seen things come back to at or very, very near where they were prior to any of the construction disruption downtown, which is great to hear. Some businesses, though, are talking about sales far beyond that. Christmas sales that they have never seen before, weekly sales totals that they hadn't seen in five-plus years in their businesses. So that goes beyond even the economic collapse. That's just a stronger attention that people are getting downtown. We also started the CBG facade grant process officially. We had our first meetings with architects and owners. Burgling and cram met with 14 property owners to talk about their initial plan, taking their application into reality, and we hope to be moving forward on the next step of that pretty soon. We did have two vacant buildings sell downtown, which was very exciting, and hopefully we'll be seeing some action on those very soon. We had three new businesses open, and we had a total of over $780,000 invested actively during that period. There's also a few ongoing projects that private property owners had going on at the time. More recently, we also began planning for the summer market that we'll have during the summer, with the expanding of the market this summer, and planned for our Ballin White Event, which while that technically went next quarter's report, was a huge success from all of our initial research, our initial fabulations. And upcoming, we have the National Main Streets Conference in Baltimore, Maryland, the first week in April. We just completed a state conference on Upper Story Housing, which ties into also a lot of sustainability efforts here in Mason City. And actually, we have a conference in conjunction with the, Tricia, is it Preserve Iowa, Iowa Architecture Association, Main Street, and?
American Society of Land Safety.
American Society of Land Safety, and the State's Foreprotection Office.
And American Fighting Association.
And American Fighting Association. Altogether, it means the week after the national conference. That should again provide us with some fantastic resources. So it was relatively slow month. We did a lot of internal work during the last quarter, but we positioned ourselves very well going forward into the spring and summer here.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. You guys have done a great job down there. Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Walsh on his quarterly report? All right, thank you very much, Greg. We appreciate your time. All right, well, number four. It's my distinct pleasure of introducing our very fine city auditor, Mr. Doug Crumley. Mr. Jacobson is not here tonight to do so. Mr. Crumley?
I'm waiting for the other shoe to fall out. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, citizens, it's my distinct pleasure to be back up here after being gone for about three years here. Previously, John Olson, who is my partner, presented the last three years, and he's busy taking care of family business at a orchestra presentation this evening for his daughter. So he said I can do this, see if I can keep up with it. Anyway, excuse me. I'm getting over a cold here, and it's made presents some problems here. Since we have three new members to the council, I think what I'm going to do is go and expand this just a little bit. Don't shudder, Mayor. The 2011 CAFER, which is Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, everybody should have already received their copy of it, had a chance to peruse it. I'm sure minutely investigate every line item in those 200 and some pages. This actually, this CAFER presents the financial information for the city's activities for the last year, as well as some explanatory information provided by the finance department. The city, people need to remember, the management of the city is responsible for all of the information in the report. It's our responsibility to audit the information and determine whether it fairly presents the financial status of the city. The CAFER is broken down into four main sections. The introductory section includes a listing of the city officials, an organization chart of transmittal letter prepared by the finance director, Mr. Jacobson, and the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the previous year's CAFER. It's presented by the Government Finance Officers Association and is their highest award for financial reporting excellence. This happens to be the 25th consecutive year the city has received this award, and the city of Mason City is one of only 20 cities in the state of Iowa that have qualified to receive this award. The next section is the financial section, and that is the main section of the report. And it contains our, excuse me, our auditors' reports, management's discussion and analysis of the financial statements, the actual financial statements, and the notes to the financial statements. The independent auditor's report includes an unqualified or a clean opinion on the basic statements and the supplementary statements. The financial statements present information in two different formats. The first of these is a full accrual method in which all of the city's assets, liabilities, revenues, expenditures are accumulated in the statement of net assets and the statement of activities. That would be Exhibits 1 and 2 in your CAFERS. This method is comparable to what private businesses use to do their accounting. The city has in excess of $226 million in assets, which is approximately a $13 million increase from last year. $12 million of that $13 million represents a net increase in land and fixed assets. At the same time, the city recognized over $80 million worth of liabilities, of which approximately $60 million is some form of long-term debt, either bonds, notes, leases, or contracts of some type or other. The second format is the traditional modified accrual method, which concentrates on the current financial resources of the city rather than the flow of economic resources. This means that the expenditures for capital improvements, vehicles, equipment are considered current expenses rather than providing some type of future benefit. By the same token, general debt is not recognized until it's paid to the bondholders. So you can see that there are significant differences in the two methods. The purpose of the two methods is to give you an ability to compare the overall financial planning, or excuse me, financial progress and stability of the city over time, while at the same time providing a means to concentrate on those activities affecting the current resources that you have available to the city. The financial section also includes the notes to the financial statements, which provide a detailed explanation of amounts in the financial statements. The third section of CAFER is the statistical section. This section is not audited by us. It's presented by the city, but we do not audit it. It presents up to 10 years of comparative information covering changes and such things as net assets, general government revenues, property tax rates, demographics, and various analysis of debt and debt coverage. One interesting item there that we like to bring up every year, whether it's good or bad, is that total debt per capita. At the end of 2011, it was $2,130. At the end of 2006, approximately five years ago, it was $1,071. And so you can see what the effect of the debt activities, the bond issuance activities of the city are doing. By the same token, those bond proceeds were used for a lot of large projects in the city. The final section is the compliance section. The section includes required reporting of federal grants administered by the city as well as internal control reporting, and our comments and recommendations on ways to improve the city financial reporting. The city expensed over $10.6 million in federal grant funds for projects in 2011. The largest of those was flood buyouts, demolition, and debris removal related to the 2008 flood. That was approximately $9.1 million last year. There were also funds expended in the prior year. There will be significant funds expended in the current year as well. The next item was airport improvements for only $629,000, and local transit managed to accumulate $337,000 worth of grant funds during the year. An interesting item here is that from 2008 to 2011, federal grant expenditures increased from $4.4 million to the $10.6 million that I earlier mentioned, and the number of reported grants increased from 48 to 63. And this does not, these are only federal grants. This doesn't include any of the state grants in these numbers. Four grants were, four grant types were selected as major. They were community development block grants, airport improvement program grants, disaster grants, public assistance, and hazard mitigation grants. Three out of those four were all related to the 2008 flood event. Only the airport was not. The compliance section also includes our report on internal control over financial reporting, and our comments and recommendations for improvements. We've made several recommendations, and I believe most of those have already been adopted. Looks like I've still got almost a minute, so. Don't have to use all time?
That's all right. That's coming up, Mark. Do you have a few more comments?
Yes.
Did we pay you to be here?
That's exactly right. Well, it's pretty well covered in everything else, so. The only thing that I wanted to do, the only thing that I have left, is to say thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to be the auditors, to work with the various departments and members of the city staff. I think we've probably touched in one way or another almost every department in the city. Some of them are happy to see us, others are like, oh, you guys again. But it's all good. It's all pretty much fun. We enjoy it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Glenn Walsh. We appreciate it. Hey, Council, do you guys have questions for Mr. Crumley? Yeah, Mr. Lee?
I wrote the numbers down right. He said 2000, we're talking per debt per citizen, is that correct?
Correct.
2006, you had, what was your number, $1,071?
I think it was $1,071 without looking, but.
And 2011 was what?
2011 was 2,000... 2,130.
Do you know where that 2,130 stands roughly with other communities? Are we average above, below? Just curious.
You asked a question that I was afraid you were going to ask, and I went into my research this afternoon, and I did not get the time to research that. I'm thinking that it's probably in the median area right now. The allowable debt figure is probably about, for the city, is approximately 41%, 42%, I believe, of the allowable. I understand that there are some debt programs that are coming on board here this year that will increase that level closer to the high 40s, I believe, is what I've seen. And that debt level is based on the assessed value of property in the city.
Okay. Thank you.
It also wouldn't help that our census number went down also on top of.
It also wouldn't help that our census number went down also on top of the fact that we so much, but why we're in other places.
Right. Right. Because those census numbers, when those, that number is calculated for per capita, it's based on the 10-year census. So as soon as you have that new census number in there, that's going to create a new change.
And, and thank you, Mr. Lee. Any other members? All right. Thank you very much. We really appreciate you being here. You guys do a great job.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Well, now's the time for public forum. Mayor Council, welcome. Comments from the public on agenda items, all of them. And you're just asked to give the name, address, and the item in which you are speaking to, and keep your comments concise in five minutes. Box right down the wall. All right. Well, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Number five minutes, regular special closed meeting of February 7th and work session minutes of January 31st, 2012. Six claims dated February 9th, 16th through 2012. Seven permits. Eight audited financial report. Nine administrative recommending approval to appoint to hire the Sandalls things from growth development and planning director free through salary level step one. Ten administrative recommending approval resolution levying assessments for charges on certain properties and certification of same county treasurer for collection. Eleven administrative recommending approval resolution appointing Perry Buckington as human resource manager for the city of Mason City, Iowa, grade three, salary level step three. Twelve administrative recommending approval resolution improvement proposal for personal oversight, please mark the cost of $1 and authorizing the execution of purchase agreement from Harley Davidson Incorporated. Thirteen administrative recommending approval resolution authorize notice to bidders fixing amount of bid security and ordering clerk to publish notice and fixing a date to receive the same and for public hearings on plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for destruction of 2012 pavement marking program. Fourteen administrative recommending approval resolution setting a date for hearing on the proposed 2012-2013 budget for the city of Mason City, Iowa. And fifteen administrative recommending approval resolution authorizing submission of a section, section 106 planning grant to the IDED authority to fund a district narrative in oral history for the East Park Place neighborhood in conjunction with letter of agreement for the city's 100% CDVG by authorizing execution of grant agreement upon application approval. Sixteen administrative recommending approval resolution authorizing submission of a 2011 staffing for adequate fire and emergency response was safer as the act in their program to homeland security. The federal emergency management agency hired three additional firefighters to improve staffing and deployment capabilities in order to respond to emergencies, ensuring the community has adequate protection from fire and fire-related hazards. Affirming commitment for local funds and authorizing execution of grant agreement upon application approval. And seventeen administrative recommending approval resolution granting preliminary approval for tax exemptions allowed in the Mason City urban revitalization plan. Members, do we have any items that we'd like, or Ms. Marinas?
Number 15.
Is there a Ms. Kuhn? 11 and 13, please. Who else down there? Outside your missile, or?
Seventeen.
Sixteen.
All right. Well, we will entertain a motion on the consent agenda to approve the consent agenda in pool with the exception of 11, 13, 15, 16, and 17. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Clerk Colerow?
Marinas?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Tarnquist?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, council. Number 11 is Mr. Kuhn. Mr. Kuhn, do you have a motion? Motion to approve. All right. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Kuhn?
Yeah. I apologize I haven't had a chance to connect to you guys from E.C. and President's Day yesterday, and I was out of town today, but just had a couple of questions. First, I've heard nothing but very good things, obviously, from people at IMI Cornelius and Polston and, and people that he's worked with in the past, but just had a, a couple of questions. First, the, the last time where, where it was not human resource director and city attorney, what was the, the starting step level of pay when it was just the HR director position?
It was the same level that he will be hired at. It was a level 30. And I don't know for sure what step he left, that Brian Carrick left at, but it was the same level of pay.
Okay. And the other applicants, just more of a curious notion for me, were they from private industry, public? Were we, the, the pool, or were we?
Perry was the only one with public experience. The others were private, and so that was one of the advantages that we found in Perry.
Okay. That's all I have. Again, I've heard nothing but good things in the, the community. I've never had a chance to work with him, but excited to get him on board.
Anybody else? Mr. Hickey?
My one question I was curious about is, looking at this as a grade 30 and step level three, and not knowing quite how your system works on this, and I'm just going to use number nine as an example of Trish at a grade level 30, level step one, and she's been here for a extended period of time. Well, how, where do you make that determination where you start these grade levels and step levels?
What I found is that typically when we do a recruitment, if we're able to recruit an individual that is considered to be a high quality, which I feel Perry is with his background, typically we, I establish them at the grade three. And the grade three, according to resolutions that have been passed by council in the past, and also Tim Marmann addressed this back when he was here, typically we need to offer a little more money to get an experienced, qualified person in order to start. And so that was part of the negotiation process that I went through with Perry. You know, he's looking at, it's a reduction in pay for him to come here, but he has advantages, obviously, for personal reasons with not having to drive from his current job. But still, when we look at it, his, his level of experience fits well with being in the middle of the salary in my mind, and that's the authority that I specifically have, the way it's been set up. So I looked at the various things. I looked at what other human resources directors will pay, and through that process determined that that was the salary that I could negotiate in order to secure Perry to come, which was my goal in the beginning.
Okay. I've heard nothing but good things about Perry. I don't know him personally, don't know about him, but I know people I've worked with I am in different places and said very good things about him, so I'm excited to start too.
And the other comment I'll make, as far as you mentioned Tricia with her move, you know, right now she's at a four, I believe, in her current step, in her current level. And so when the time period is up, she'll go back to, so for me, it was moving her to that first level, next level up at the beginning for the time period that we'll have for her as interim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Anybody else? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Hickey.
I do have a lot of things that I think that Perry is going to be able to help us with. We've looked at a number of things for our city that we need to do. There are issues relative to making sure that we do good attrition, attrition matrix, looking at what people we have in different positions, where they're going to go, looking at succession plans and helping to train people, doing better training of our managers so that they know how to be disciplined and those types of things. And Perry will also be my lead coordinator. I'm ready to get more involved in that, and he has background at IMI where he did that type of thing, and he's had experience also in benefit management, so he has good experience that he'll bring from his time in Rochester. So I feel there are a lot of positive things that he'll bring, and, and I have a good laundry list of things for him to start on redoing our personnel policy. There's a number of things, so he'll, he'll be challenged in the beginning, that's for sure.
All right. Anybody else? Ms. Marinas?
Just wondering when he's going to start?
April 16th. It's a little bit of time. He and I have worked through an issue to his current job, his notice, and giving them, and so April 16th is expected to start.
Anybody else? All right. Well, we have a motion in a second. Clerk Colerow?
Kuhn?
Yes.
Tarnquist?
Yes.
Marinas?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much, council. Mr. Buckington, welcome aboard. We're looking forward to having you, so. Number 13, administrative recommending approval resolution authorize notice to bidders fixing amount of bid security and ordering clerk to publish notice and fixing a date for receiving same and for public hearing on plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for construction of the 2012 pavement marking program. Do we have a motion? Mr. Kuhn?
Yes. Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Kuhn?
Quick question for, for Stangler. Do you have?
Smart Grant.
Smart, yeah. If you want, could step up quick, and again, this is something I would have asked if I had the time, but was, was out of touch. Is this, this project, as I was going through it, and I could be wrong, but it seemed like things we could potentially do in-house, or do we have the capability, materials that we were purchased to, to do this within? Do we have to?
No, we don't. The, actually, to, if you're looking at just the length of these line, the painting on those, I mean, it, it would take a specialized truck. The purpose of specialized trucks, and those are several hundred thousand dollars just for that truck. There's a lot of equipment on there, a lot of maintenance, a lot of upkeep just for that equipment alone, so. Yeah, actually, last couple of years we got really good prices on the painting, and we hope to continue.
Do we typically see a number of bidders?
Yeah, we, I think last year we had five or six. I mean, there is, we do get a number of them, so.
Local?
No. There, we have, the only thing we have local are, I believe there's two companies who do, they would do parking lots and small projects above that, but, but this does take a bigger company. They do a lot of state work around the state, and they've got, generally, a pretty large area, so.
When, obviously, this would predate me, but when was the last time we could do this within our own operations?
We, I don't think we've ever, as long as I've been here, 12 years anyway, we've never been able to do all of our street painting that I'm aware of, so. It is a big, it's a big project. It doesn't take them that long, but there's a lot there, and they have a lot, they have a lot of equipment, so they can cover pretty quickly.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Kuhn. Anyone else on this? All right. Well, we have a motion in a second. Seeing no other questions, Clerk Colerow?
Kuhn?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Tarnquist?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Marinas?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carries. Number 15, administrative recommending approval resolution authorizing submission of a section 106 planning grant to the IDED authority to fund a district narrative in oral history for the East Park Place neighborhood in conjunction with the letter of this agreement for the city's 100% CDVG by and authorizing execution of a grant agreement upon application approval. Ms. Marinas, I believe, yes, do you have a motion?
I do. I move approval.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Ms. Marinas?
I just had quite a couple of questions for Ms. Sandel about the, the grant proposal. First of all, if you could just kind of tell me a little bit about what kind of staff time you think this is going to take? And secondly, if you could address maybe the application or the possible application for the National Register for the historic district?
We don't have the capability to do this project in-house. To do this type of a historic study, you have to meet the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Architectural History, and there's also specific standards for ethnographies or oral histories, and we don't have the capability to do that in-house. Staff time would be spent managing the grant, doing the billing, the invoicing, writing the RFP, and managing, and monitoring the work of the consultant, probably with two separate consultants to do the work. We believe that we can hire a videographer locally to do the work, the ethnographer to do the actual interviews, if somebody had to come from outside. What our hope is, is that the end product, not only will we have the DVD and the booklet, but the end product gives us the information that we need to pass on to potential buyers of the historic houses in the East Park Place District so that they can maintain National Register eligibility if it exists on their houses and move them, which would allow them to qualify for the state to start tax credit of 25% of the cost of moving or rehabbing the house. We think that's a very important financial incentive as we move forward to move these houses, and we have, we need to do some more in-depth study work on those houses to determine whether or not they're, they're individually eligible.
What is your timeline for completion of this?
Well, we have, the applicant, we'll get the application in within about a week. It'll take it about, take the state about a week to review and award the application. Then we'll finish negotiations with our letter of agreement. That'll come back to the council for approval, and then we'll issue the RFP for the historic study. We think that it could take, depending on how much time the consultant has available, six months to a year. It, this is tied to our CDVG funded buyout, and the end date on that is November of this year, and we've already warned the state that in order to, they're saying we have to have it cleaned up, we have to have acquisition demolition done, and all, all of our outstanding costs paid by November of this year. This project is going to take us possibly a year. They're paying for it, so we're going to have to have an extension to get it done. So our goal is to have it all done within the next year. We also, we'll most likely be losing Susan Nervis when it gets too cold for her partners who are flip-flops in Iowa, and so our priority is to get as much work as done as possible before she goes. Okay? Because she won't be your next winter, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Sandel? Anybody else? All right. We have a motion in a second. Seeing none, no other comments? Clerk Colerow?
Marinas?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Tarnquist?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Number 16, administrative recommending approval resolution authorizing submission of a 2011 staffing requirement for fire and emergency response, which is acronym is SABR, a lot of people call that, program to homeland security to the federal emergency management agency to hire three additional firefighters to improve staffing and deployment capabilities in order to respond to emergency, emergencies, ensuring the community has adequate protection from fire and fire-related hazards. Affirming commitment for local goals and authorizing execution of grant agreement upon application approval. Ms. Tarnquist, do you have motion to approve?
Move approval.
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hickey, I believe. Ms. Tarnquist?
I support this as that question. This is very easy to support, but I wanted to share some thoughts with my colleagues and, and I guess by way of doing that with the community, I, I see this as kind of sticking our finger in the dyke. We're going to be stopped in the lead for a little while if we get the grant, but that's not what is solving the issue that we have. If you take a look at the unaudited financial report in section eight, you'll see that we're about two-thirds of the way into the fiscal year, and we've already overrun the budget for overtime for the fire department for the year. That's not a criticism of the chief, of the chief. It's not a criticism of our firefighters. We've, obviously, in my opinion, got a very good chief. We've got great people in the fire department. We provide a great service to the taxpayers, but that doesn't belie the fact that we, we overrun the budget, and this, we tend to do more often than not. So obviously, we have a problem we need to address, and we need to do that together. Under item number 21, we're going to be asked to officially approve our council priorities and goals that we all settled on here a few weeks ago, and of the top five priorities, and I don't know that these are in any particular order, but number three on the list is discussion of streamlining the fire department. And I, I really hope that we can do that as a council, and I hope we can do that as a community and partners with the fire department without this turning into something that it's not. We're pretty good in this community of turn, at turning things into something that it really isn't. You know, councilman Hickey has suggested that we take a look at moving the fire department from 20 hour, 24-hour shifts to eight-hour shifts. That may, or may not be a good idea. I don't know. But I do know I don't have a better idea, and I do know that we've got a problem that we need to work together to address, and so my hope would be that as we work together and we start the dialogue, we're open-minded, and we need the firefighters, and we need the chief, we need all of us at the table focused on the problem, and the problem is how do we deliver the, the first-class service that we're doing right now to the taxpayer, hopefully, at the best possible price? We've, obviously, in my opinion, got a very good chief, we've got great people in the fire department, we provide a great service to the taxpayers, um, but that doesn't belie the fact that we, we overrun the budget, and, and this, we tend to do more often than not, so obviously, we have a problem we need to address, and we need to do that together. Under item number 21, we're gonna be asked to officially approve our council priorities and goals that we all settled on here a few weeks ago, and of the top, uh, five priorities, and I don't know that these are in any particular order, but number three on the list is discussion of streamlining the fire department. And I, I really hope that we can do that as a council, and I hope we can do that as a community and partner with the fire department without this turning into something that it's not. We're pretty good in this community of turn, at turning things into something that it really isn't. You know, councilman Hickey has suggested that we take a look at moving the fire department from 20 hour, 24-hour shifts, uh, to eight-hour shifts. That may, or may not be a good idea.
I don't know.
But I do know I don't have a better idea, and I do know that we've got a problem that we need to work together to address, and so my hope would be that as we work together and we start the dialogue, um, we're open-minded, and we need the firefighters, and we need the chief, we need all of us at the table focused on the problem, and the problem is, how do we deliver the, the first-class service that we're doing right now to the taxpayer, hopefully, at the best possible price for the taxpayer? On this issue, um, the one thing that, that cannot slide is public safety. In my opinion, that overrides cost, and, and with police and fire, uh, that always will. But to the extent that we can deliver that same high-quality service and maybe do so more cost-effective for the taxpayer, I think that's a discussion that we really need to have. At the end of the day, we may not change anything, we don't know. But I think it would be irresponsible of us to not have, um, an informed discussion and see what we might be able to do, um, in sharing and exchanging ideas, so. That's all I really wanted to say on this, again, I support this without question. Of course, if, uh, indeed, we get the grant, that buys us a little bit of time, um, two, three years, whatever the term of the grant may be, um, but again, it's Band-Aid, because when the grant money goes away, we don't have a way of funding these three positions, and of course, if we're not successful in getting the grant, then we wake up tomorrow right where we are today, and that's still, with the problem that needs to be addressed, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torquess. Anybody else on this? Do you, Mr. Hickey, have a second?
I wouldn't say well said, Mr. Torquess. And part of my reason for bringing that up, and I'm not stuck on eight-hour shifts per se, 12-hour shifts would work better, but I also look at it as, um, for a service to the community, um, and then also safety to our firefighters as well. When they're working 24-hour shifts, it's, there's sleep deprivation and different things that limits some of the safety issues that may happen, so, um, I'm all for this as well, and I hope we can have some good discussion, move forward, and come to some resolution in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Anybody else? Ms. Silver.
Just a real quick question, if we do get approved for these funds, um, how soon will we be able to bring somebody aboard?
That's a good question, I don't, I don't know specifically what the timeline is.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I think the timeline is sometime this summer, but they would tell us if we received it or not. From that point, we do have a current list, I mean, I would say after we got the okay, probably for about six weeks.
About six weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silver, again, any else? So, Mr. Torquess, I have a question, go ahead.
Yeah, that was, that was a good question, and reminded me that the community should also be aware that one other significant benefit of this, this grant opportunity is it provides a feeder, uh, for the fire department, and as we have people retire or move on for whatever reason, it creates an opportunity for us to have experienced people with the department that we can move into those open positions and then use the grant positions to continue backfilling. So I think that's a pretty significant, significant advantage to the community as well.
Thank you, Mr. Torquess. Anybody else? Alright. We have a motion and a second, seeing no other comments. Kurt Koral.
Torquess.
Yes.
Hickey.
Yes.
Marinas.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Huen.
Yes.
Silver.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carries. Uh, number 17. Administrator recommending approval resolution granting preliminary approval for tax exemptions allowing the Mason City Urban Revitalization Plan. Ms. Silver, do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Torquess, Ms. Silver.
First off, there's a list of, I didn't count them up here, but it's an overwhelming number, um, it's great to see the particip, participation from our citizens here, and what this is in reference to is our Urban Revitalization Tax Abatement Program, and for the new, um, council, we approved this on final on October 4th of 2011, so to have this many names on the list in a short four-and-a-half months is pretty exciting, I guess. Just a couple of questions. I think we're gonna be working in conjunction, um, with the city assessor on this, so once we approve this list, then it goes to Mr. Zinnell for final approval, correct?
Yes.
These citizens had to place applications in to your department?
Yes.
And so you pre-qualified, pre-springs?
We, we basically accepted all applications. Our one question to everyone was, was this work that was completed in this year? Because the, the key here is that as of January 1, 2012, just this past January, the assessment, this new value needed to go on the tax rolls. If it was already on the tax rolls, January 1 of 2011, that meant the work had already been done. It had been done in 2010 or '09 or whatever. Because this program was just adopted in 2011, we needed to have work that was done this last calendar year. People made application to us by February 1. We asked them the question, was, and the application was asked, you know, was this work completed in 2011? We reviewed all that with people, and they said yes, and we accepted the application. In a couple instances, we talked to the city assessor, and in fact, he gave us a list, because he tracks these things during the year, he shared with us his list of properties that had pulled building permits and had done work in the past year for us to make sure. What we did actually was we sent out little, um, letters to people who we thought probably would be eligible to say, make sure, you know, if you think you're eligible for this program, um, make an application. But we did basically accept all applications. We had a few questions. You asked today, a couple of, of properties, um, they have, they, they pulled building permits a number of years ago, but, but the builder of those properties had assured me that he just finally finished the properties up this past year. Unfortunately, I think that we found that the assessment, um, was already on the books prior to January 1 of this year, so it is the city assessor, however, you take the applications, you guys could in fact pull them and say, no, these we don't think go forward, but, but he actually makes the decision based on state rules, so, uh, he will assess whether they've met their 10% increase or their, their commercial, their 15% increase. He will be look, he's the one who puts the values on the properties, he'll see what was on the books as of January 1, 2010, January 1, 2011, and he will make the final decision. State law doesn't say anything that we have to notify people whether they've been approved or not, but Bob Zinnell has said that, um, he'll just stamp on the first page of the application, approved or denied, and send these out to everyone, so everybody should accept, expect a, a, a letter from Mr. Zinnell that says their project has or has not been approved, but he actually does have the final, the final say here. So my, my memo might not have been clear enough in terms of, uh, you really accept and transmit the applications to the city assessor for final review.
That's kind of where I was going at, thank you very much for clearing that up. And another clarification, this is only once a year, we're gonna get this before council, correct?
Correct.
February, February?
Lady, everyone, uh, every year, I mean, we have adopted a plan for a 10-year period. Every February 1st, for the next 10 years, people will be submitting applications to my office, Growth Development and Planning, third floor, City Hall, um, and then they come to you, and then they go to the city assessor.
Are, excuse me, are you going to be accepting applications all year long and then just due February 1st?
They're due February 1st, um, as long as the project's completed, so if someone is working on something right now and they complete it, they certainly can come and drop their application off. Most people, I mean, we didn't pass this program until, as you said, like, August, October, whatever, so people, you know, we got the application done, and people were submitting them in November and December and January, so most of them came in at the end, but people could drop them off, the project is done now, drop them off anytime until February 1 of 2013 now, for what completed this year. Now here, we had people who missed the February 1 deadline, um, for work that was just done this past year. The, the law allows you a one-year, one-year, you know, miss, so, um, I've already told people who called me about the February 1st and said, can I sneak it in? And I said, no, it's a hard deadline, but you do have till next year, and they'll still get a five-year exemption, but this has to be for work that was completed in 2011. We can't take someone who was, who did work in 2010 and apply that two-years' worth this first year, unfortunately, it doesn't work, but next February 1, if they, they missed this year's deadline, they're still gonna apply.
Thank you, Director.
Keep those applications coming.
Yeah, we're pleased that we had 42, so.
Anybody else? Mr. Hickey.
I just wanna say, uh, me as a council member, I hope that we don't get into the business of breaking down each property and, and assessing them, I would hopefully leave that up to Mr. Zinnell. I know, when I first got on the council, going through some of the FEMA projects because of the flood, um, there were some properties that were excluded, I, and I felt they were because of personality conflicts that did qualify and didn't make it, so I just hope that we can let staff do their job, and, and that we can go through the process and approve them that way, uh, and take us completely out of the equation. I think it'll be a lot better process as a result of it.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey.
One I'd say is that, um, I think next year will also be better for us from a standpoint of being able to measure whether or not this particular project is having an impact on people making a decision whether to build or not build, because this year, we're catching up all those that were already maybe considering or doing or had completed prior to the project getting approved in October, so I think the years going forward, I think we'll actually start getting a little better measure as to whether or not it's having an impact. Obviously, we see there's a lot of growth and a lot of building going on, but the future will really tell us how effective this program is.
Seeing none, and then, Mr. Huen.
Yeah, um, quick question on the commercial side. First off, I'd say that this is a tremendous program, I hope, I'm echoing Mr. Trout, I hope this is kind of the tipping point for some, uh, property owners to, to make that addition or renovation. This is just kind of a comment on the fly here, but as I was thinking about the commercial property tax side, I think we had four applicants, um, as we're talking about commercial property tax reform, the, when they're submitting their application, the 10-year sliding scale or three-year 100% abatement, are we giving, giving any sort of guidance or encouragement of which route to go and which they would see the biggest return on their investment? The reason I ask is because if we're potentially seeing a 5% reduction over eight years, that's just one plan, if they did the three-year 100% abatement, they would be seeing more return on their investment than over a 10-year sliding scale, projecting that they would, that those rates would be lower after those three years, or every year?
We don't, we don't advise. So they have that choice, and if they would work the numbers themselves, um, you know, there probably is an advantage of taking the three years 100% right up front, some people just like to have a little bit of help over a 10-year period. It goes from like 80% down to 20% kind of thing over that, that 10-year period. I have to say, um, just to clarify, people out there are, I, I had a call today from, because it's in the paper, of, uh, commercial property owners doing some improvements. While the residential plan is citywide, all our residential districts, those Z2, Z3, and downtown Z5 districts are within the plan area, we only, we only, um, allow this commercial abatement, um, in the downtown and the north federal corridor, so it's a smaller area that is eligible for the commercial property tax exemption.
Thank you, and I would, I would just, kind of as a, an idea for, for commercial property tax owners, that's a way to see if we're gonna see a 5% over eight years or whatever it may be, using that other, this option of 100% abatement over three years could be a bigger return on that investment for those, uh, commercial property tax owners that are looking at this program, so, thank you.
Anybody else have a? Alright. Well, we have a motion and a second, and seeing no other questions. Kurt Koral.
Silver.
Yes.
Torquess.
Yes.
Huen.
Yes.
Hickey.
Yes.
Marinas.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Alright, council, thank you very much. Uh, number 18 is Administrator recommending approval resolution adopting the 2013, 2017 capital improvement plan for the city of Mason City, Iowa, and Mr. Trout, uh, would you like to, uh? Uh, you wanna open up and give an introduction for this, and then we'll do the public hearing?
Right, I'm a pinch hit for Mr. Jacobson tonight, on the weather, um, with his memo, he goes into some details relative to the, to the project. Primarily, we're looking at, this is the five-year capital improvements plan that we're approving tonight. The focus is on year one, obviously, because that is what is expected to spend going into next year. Fiscal year 2013 has a total of $10,923,231 of capital projects. The plan calls for bonding of approximately $1.3 million for various police, fire, museum, and cemetery projects, and that includes the $1 million for the fire truck purchase. The water fund rate will increase, uh, by 4.43%, uh, funding about $1.125 million for the water projects, the largest being to reroute water veins, uh, from sanitary sewer manholes. Now, the sewer funds, uh, projects total about $900,000, largest being the continuation of collection system maintenance, uh, that has been identified for the inflow infiltration, uh, study that we can have completed, and there will be no rate increase. There is a long list of all the projects which is included in the CIP that council has received, and we've talked about these, um, at three different meetings, so I guess, um, open up the questions, and that will include my part.
Alright. Well, I'll tell you what, we're gonna open the public hearing, and, uh, this is for the public, if you have comments you'd like to make regarding this item, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and go on, please. Seeing none? We'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion and a second to adopt this resolution?
Motion approved.
Your second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Hickey?
Yeah, Mr. Trout, I was wondering, with the ladder truck, and that's a million, of course, probably the biggest thing on this CIP, can you explain to the public with the ISO rating what we follow with insurance, and how that could affect people's insurance rates? If we didn't buy the fire truck?
Yes, the, the fire truck purchase is required according to our ISO rating, and ISO rating is insurance rating of our city based on, um, multiple factors, being our building permit and, uh, COVID policies, but one of those primary factors is the, uh, type of fire department that we have, type of equipment we have, training, et cetera. Our last rating required us to have two aero fire trucks in order to maintain the ISO 3 rating, which is the, it's a very good rating, one of the lowest in the state. The cost that was going, that's incurred by the project, um, by doing the, the, um, excuse me, by doing the, uh, aero fire truck is actually less than what would be effective on our, our ISO rating going to a four. If we did not purchase this fire truck, they came and looked at our community, we would likely be upgraded to a four, and that would change everybody's commercial and residential property insurance rates because of that change in our fire department status. We did the numbers, working with the insurance agent, looking at what that change would be, and we ended up determining that it would be a greater increase to your insurance rate than it would be your property taxes, um, by not, by, if, by going ahead and moving forward with the fire truck, we avoid that cost to our insurance rates.
And the last time we had that, uh, inspection chief was how long ago?
1998.
So a pretty good chance of...
They usually come every 10 years, so I'm surprised we haven't seen them.
Yeah, right, so we're, we're past due for inspection.
I know, I've been one of the proponents the last two years of postponing the ladder truck, but I think it's time to move forward and then get it done, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Uh, Mr. Lee, you have a second?
No, I see, door doesn't want to.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Trout, Mr. Torquess.
I, too, have been one of the people the last couple of years that's wanted to postpone the fire truck, and I, too, am one of the people this year that's ready to buy the ladder truck. I think, my recollection of the numbers was, if we didn't buy the fire truck, we could expect the average person in Mason City to see an increase, increase of around $7 a year, primarily through their insurance, uh, costs, and if we buy the fire truck, of course, we're gonna have to issue bonds, and that's gonna cost the average person in Mason City about $4. So obviously, it's, it's cheaper for us to buy the fire truck, even though that's gonna be an, an increase in our property taxes next year, we're avoiding, uh, the unforeseen insurance increase.
Thank you, Mr. Tornquist. Good points. Anybody else? All right. Seeing none, we have a motion on the resolution and a second. For a call roll.
Hickey.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Tornquist.
Yes.
Silver.
Yes.
Marinas.
Yes.
Keon.
Yes.
That's great. Thank you very much, council. I'll just make a note on this. This was a, this was a very good effort by staff, and the council teamed up with staff very well. And I thought you were going to make a few questions.
Yeah, I did. Probably the thing that I would sum up with is that the fact that with the amount of projects that we're doing, this is one of our most expenditures that we've had in a while, but also very reasonable expenditures that continue to move us forward, improving our infrastructure in the community. We're not doing standing still, doing nothing. We are moving forward, but also a very, I think, responsible effort.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. All right. Number 19, administrative recommending approval resolution approving non-authorizing execution of a development agreement by and between the city of Mason City and Carvel Kitchen Solutions Corporation, a division of Carvel Inc. Now's the time for public hearing. If you have comments you'd like to make on this, welcome to come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes. Gone once, twice, gone. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion and a second to adopt the resolution?
So...
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Lee?
I do have this question or two. I'm in agreement with this, but I just want a clarification from Mr. Trout or whoever. The two, the last two years on the 200% rebate, can you explain how that actually works? Because that was, did that come in? How does that work?
She, Ms. Myrie worked through the issue without needing to do this, that's all I understand.
All right.
We offered as part of our terms of agreement with the company, Carvel, and we developed a representative here, and I have any questions of them, a 10-year 100% tax, uh, tax abatement tip, tip on this project. Community growth, the community growth district in which this company exists only has, will expire in 2021. So by the time taxes, I think the topic seemed like in 2011, when we first did this deal, that we had 10 years left. But once a building's built, taxes don't come online for about 18 months, and so the district would expire before us giving twice a year the Miami Yacht Rebate Back to the Company. So, we agreed to 10 years, we came up with this estimated not to exceed amount of dollars, and we will do twice a year for eight years, and then all of a sudden, we're, we're only going to have, no, six years. And then we're going to just have a couple of years left, and then we'll do double in years seven and eight. So they'll get twice their, their assessment rebated to them.
It was a factor of time. The time that was left in the district did not allow us to do what we typically do for a project like this, providing 10 years. So they're receiving the same dollar amount as a rebate as they would under a normal, normal program that we run with, with the development. But the length of the district did not allow us to be able to do that. So we're backloading, providing the last two years they would typically receive, they'll receive it in year seven and eight.
Where does that 200, that actual 100% come from, though?
Well, the district, community growth has a, a balance, or basically an amount that is not asked for right now. It's a strong district, and so therefore, there is, there is money available for us to access based off of the existing increment that is there prior to them ever beginning their project. So we have money available that allows us to be able to do this type of a project, and in this way.
And, and in fact, the company is paying much more on the, the rest of their plant in terms of property taxes for us to take from their own property taxes that they've paid to make up that difference.
Well, I see like $700,000 is not to exceed. Has they already done the math and seen how close that will be to that, or?
Well, what we, what we look at is, when they first came forward, they said they had a 12.5, whatever, million-dollar project. About three of that, three million of it is going to be assessed value. For every million dollars of new assessed value, you pay taxes on, tip taxes on about $30,000 on that tip. So $3 million, 30, 60, 90, back that off, they don't get a full assessment. We came up with about a $70,000 a year of new taxes estimate on that. So that's how we got to the 700,000. We usually put a not to exceed number in there based on just a projection of what those taxes are estimated to be. So typically, typically, the taxes are less, it seems to be.
All right. And I have one question, but I'll see if anybody else. This is the time. I'll wait until my three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Anybody else? Ms. Silver.
Mr. Swanson, thank you for coming this evening, and thank you for being such a great partner in the community. I've been out to your facility, and you have a first-rate operation. Folks enjoy working out there, and, and again, we appreciate how you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Silver. Anybody else? Mr. Hickey?
I'll say thank you also to Mr. Swanson and Carvel for partnering with Mason City and making investment in our community, and I can't wait for the next expansion.
All right.
I just have, if you have that one. I just wanted to buy the three minutes. I was going to run out of one, I thought. So, um, I don't want to yell that up here. I'm so, I'm so perfect on my time. I know humanism. No, I see the minimum average, starting wage is 1365. That's a, Mr. Swanson, is that correct? The minimum average?
Yeah, I mean, that's a...
Is that the minimum per pay job, I mean, per job, or is that, that says minimum average?
Yeah, it's the, it's right in line with the high-end average and all the, the application process. So that's, we have salary positions in there, and it's, it's, you know, average of those 20, 20 jobs up, that's what the start...
Okay, you just got, I was going to ask you if these are salary included. So there's some of these would be salary included?
Those jobs are salary positions, yes.
Okay. The last answer, by the way, this is not interrogation, that's okay. Okay. Just questions I have. The other one is, he says 20 new jobs created by this October, October 31st. It's an eight-year TIF project. You guys have added a lot of jobs. Again, I expect this to, Mr. Hickey, we'll add another 150 in the next couple of years, I know, right? But, um, to get this, it says 20 jobs, but there's no guarantee enough in eight months those jobs are lost, and then we're, the contract still goes through. Is this correct to you or to Mr. Trout? I missed it in the back here, the contract, but I missed it.
There's a...
There's always a default clause in there. So we monitor the jobs over the length of the contract. So whether it's an eight-year or 10-year contract, he submits an annual certification for us to check the jobs. If for some reason they don't make the jobs, they don't get the rebate.
Six-month or...
And you look at section 6.7 has annual certification requirements of them. So that explains what they're required to produce for jobs and how long they have to maintain. And so, yeah, section 6.7.
All right. Sorry, Mr. Swanson. Thank you very much. And again, echo all, everybody else's, great job. Okay?
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Anybody else?
Just made me think of one quick question. If they do say come up one job short, I'm sorry, I'm right in front of you, but we have the flexibility to say, you know, we're not going to take the rebate back. It's, had a little leniency there.
I think there is some, I mean, obviously, the council can do with it one, but it's prescribed specifically in the contract how we handle the one less, and I think it's just a modification on the rebate amount that Patrick came, I can't remember.
I'd have to look at the details. I, I think it's, I think it's pretty cut and dry. They don't make it that, that semi-annual, they don't get it. A company can come and request an amendment to the agreement that would say, here's the reasons why we haven't met our job creation, and we would ask for an extension of time, you know?
And that, that's what I was getting at. I want to have that clawback provision that protects the city, but at the same time, we want to be a business-friendly city council that's willing to work with our corporate leaders and keep those jobs in the right direction. And even though we need guidelines set and deadlines set, at the same time, we, we are here to work with you. So thank you.
Right. And the other thing that we do a lot of times is when we're talking job numbers with the client, with the prospect, the company, the student expansion, we also want them to be realistic. We don't want them to say, well, I think we're going to create 30 jobs. Well, the true reality is, they know they can support 20. That's a guarantee. And so we try to get them to focus on what they feel comfortable with. We don't want them to overstretch on the number of jobs they're going to create, so that we don't have to come back and request that extension. We'd rather have them just smooth right on through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Q. Anybody else? Mr. Tornquist.
I just want you to appreciate, oh, I'm really biting my tongue. I'm having an IC Systems flashback.
I think it'll always take more than a flashback. All right. Anybody else? All right. We have a motion and a second. For a call roll.
Lee.
Yes.
Silver.
Yes.
Keon.
Yes.
Marinas.
Yes.
Hickey.
Yes.
Tornquist.
Yes.
All right. Well, congratulations, Carvel. Thank you very much. You are an absolutely wonderful partner in our community. We of course look forward to doing many more partnerships as we move forward. So thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Swanson. All right. Let's move to do 20 here. Administrative recommending approval reorganization of third, fourth departments and approval to eliminate the chief building official position and begin the hiring process for a new growth development and planning director that will also oversee the building and neighborhood services department as a division. Is there a motion and a second for approval? Silver. Thank you, Mr. Q. Anybody else? Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Marinas. Mr. Q, I have to admit, this, this move does make me a little nervous. These are two very big positions in our city government, and the fact, the passing of Chuck McGreevy and, and Ms. Myrie's upcoming retirement, these are two very important positions within our city government that are going to be potentially put on a new person. And I just had a couple of questions. In the memo here, it says, this will allow our city to be more responsive to developers and improve the process for completing projects in our community. And I, I kind of see it the opposite way a little bit, going from two people to one. I was just hoping, Mr. Trout, if you could explain some of the efficiencies and effectiveness that we'll see putting this under one umbrella.
Sure. For me, when, when I've talked, we've made some improvements in our processes that we use. Currently, we have a development review committee that meets every week if there's a project that is being considered by someone within the community. And that is making things better because we get everybody in the same room. But one thing that we have is, and it's not necessarily a turf horse, but it is an issue of the fact that certain people have to approve parts of the development and approve different parts are not under the same person. And for me, I want to, I think that we can take the advantage and move all the different functions that are required in order to move a development from beginning to end, all of them underneath the same person. And so then that person can direct what needs to be done on a particular project, assign responsibilities for different parts as we're trying to move a project through the process. And so I see that as being a way to do that. I think that we have seen that over the last few years, that we have had a reduction in the amount of work that we have in certain areas. And so I think that there's time that different individuals can utilize their asset, their skills better to cover some of the different areas as I listed there. And so I think that one person can direct the different parts that need to be done, and I think get it done in a better way.
Do you foresee having the, I'm missing it now, a division leader for building and neighborhood services, do you foresee this position committing more of their time to economic development or planning and zoning issues?
Yes, I do. I, I do see them as doing more of the economic development side of the responsibilities Pam went, and she did some of that. And I think that there were, you know, a lot of times she was working on projects like that. I think that that is a focus that we'll have. We have subject matter experts that handle the building codes and what needs to be done when a person's building. The other areas, building neighborhood services has a good handle on what needs to be done for the area of nuisance. And so I feel this person will need to have a strong economic development background, because we have existing planning staff and building staff that can handle the very specifics that are in that particular area.
I, I, again, just would say that these are three extremely important parts of our government. I don't want to see one of the three not get the attention that they deserve. And I'm saying they wouldn't. I appreciate your clarification. It's just the building plan reviews, building inspections, electrical plumbing. Do we have any information as far as a backlog or as far as permits needing to be updated or requests from...
I don't believe we have any backlog right now. I didn't ask that specific question, but as far as I know, we've been, we've been able to keep up. And through the timeframe, when Mr. McGreevy was there, we kind of tested that, because there were those times where he was unable to work. And so there, that workload that he had had to be shifted, and that impacted my decision as to why we should be able to go ahead and look into doing this, because we oftentimes were required to do it for long stretches of time due to his absence.
Okay. I, I appreciate that, and I hope this will work. I, I plan to support this. I'd like to hear my, my colleagues' thoughts. But just, on its face, kind of looked to me to be a, and staying at the same level, level 31 is the, the pay, seems like a lot to put on one person's shoulders, and I'd like to hear my colleagues' thoughts on this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Q. Anybody else? Ms. Marinas, again, second.
The only question I have for Mr. Trout was timeline. When are you thinking this will all transpire?
Well, if, if council approved the movement forward with the hiring, I would say it's a minimum of two months, probably closer to two and a half, before I'd be able to bring a name forward. In order to advertise the appropriate amount of time, to, I need to develop the advertisement and the job description fully, and then from there, do the advertisement and the hiring process. So it would probably be two, two and a half months, which is why I asked for the change with Ms. Sandow, was because it won't happen overnight. It would take some time, and so she'll have additional workload for her.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marinas. Anybody else? Mr. Hickey?
I can tell you what I like about Mr. Keon. First of all, I like the idea that it's Brent's idea, and that it wasn't any of our ideas, that he's taken charge of the operations to the point where he's going to put in a director that he thinks can handle the position, and is going to have flexibility. Just looking through this, each person's going to have their own job, per se, but on the backside, if somebody's gone, then there are always other people who'll follow up and take over that position, those vacations or emergencies or whatever it may be, which will make our department stronger in the long run, I think, as a whole. So I like where this is going. And I assume if it doesn't work, that you would come to us and with any additional changes.
Yes, I will. It takes, so... And it's ironic. I can tell you that this, this has been tried before. I will not try to hide that. It was separate, it's been together, and then it was separate, and now we're going back together. So it's been tried, and I really think that we have the people that are in the department right now that can handle the changes that we're making. And I think that it's worth a shot. I think that it is something that, and has potential to be a very good thing for us.
And other, I, like I said, I, some of the other departments, even Mr. Stengler, he's took on the responsibilities over the years, and he's been highly successful. So I like the idea of change, a company can change culture. And worst-case scenario, if it doesn't work, we can go back to where we're at. So I'm all for it. See what happens.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Anybody else? All right. Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Our call roll.
Keon.
Yes.
Marinas.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Tornquist.
Yes.
Hickey.
Yes.
Silver.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much, council. Good job, Mr. Trout, and thank you very much to your staff. You're right, it's going to take folks out there to do this, but I think they have more than enough talent to do so. So, number 21, administrative recommending approval 2012 goals and priorities. I'll just read the goals off here. Priorities, everybody can kind of check out on the paper. 2012 goals, maintain bond balances per city financial policies and current bond rating. Two, develop sustainability plan that links to the comprehensive plan. Three, increase population by the state of Iowa average. Four, become a healthy community utilizing the Blues on model. Five, commitment to excellence in government services. And six, increase commercial and municipal... And six, increase commercial and municipal energy development. Do we have a motion and a second on number 21? Preferable. Swing, is there a second?
Second.
Call Ms. Silver. Mr. Tornquist? Thank you, Mr. Tornquist. Ms. Silver? Anybody else? Ms. Kewen?
On the priorities, the very last one, am I reading that incorrect? Did I doze off that vertical setting session?
I think there's a word missing. There's something missing there. I can't remember. But no, you're right, there's something missing that, that didn't get transposed into the document.
And I'm sure we can figure out what that was, I would, at this end of the table, we'll reflect what we're voting on here.
Chuck, you're talking about increased commercial, municipal?
No, no, priorities, there are priorities.
I thought we were just doing the goals right now.
Goals and priorities.
Oh, was that my motion?
It was your motion.
Cool.
He's talking about the last one of the priorities.
Okay, alright, alright.
Mr. Trout, do you?
I don't remember what that was.
There's not enough there for me to remember.
No, I can't, I'm sorry, I apologize.
We'll get it in there later.
It was the lowest one.
It was the last one.
But it is important, I remember, I can't remember exactly what it was. Sorry.
We'll get it later.
No, that's fine, and I would just comment, I, I think we all did a very good job working together and hashing out some ideas that we've all come to the table with, and I look forward to working with council mayor, city administrator. I would just point out one thing, I have had quite a few calls on one of the items on here, and I think I made it pretty well-known at the goal-setting session. I had some concerns about the RFP for garbage and recycling services. I would almost, and I'm not advocating for changing this at the table by any means, but the developing a continuous improvement plan, almost putting that before the RFP for garbage and recycling services, and working with our current public union members to see ways that we can work together on that to continue to keep that under our city government services before we go out for that RFP, and that's just me, that's my views. But again, it's, you know, if there's six of us up here, it's not just my ideas, so I totally support all our goals and priorities, I just, that is one I would like to see us work with our workers with first, before putting that out, so, just wanted to add that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kewen. Anybody else? Alright, seeing none, we've got a motion and a second, Mr. Tornquist made the motion. So we will take some priorities. Clear color roll.
Tornquist?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Marinas?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Kewen?
Yes.
Alright, thank you very much, council, seeing no other items, the meeting is adjourned. There will be a public input listening folks here in five minutes. Thank you, folks, have a good evening, stay safe. This is the public input for the Mason City City Council meeting, following your record collected on present. Free to come up and visit in five minutes. Lot of stuff in front of you. Please state your name and address. Go on once, twice, chief, would you like to comment? Seeing none, clear hearing, thank you, council.